All right. Good evening, everyone. I call the September 9, 2025 Hybrid Administrative Administrative Meeting of the Board of Commissioners to Order. All Commissioners are here in present this in person this evening. We're going to start with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Deputy County Manager of Health and Public Safety, as well as our departing Fire Chief Greg Perez. Thank you, Chief. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
There are none.
Thank you. Commissioners, any changes from the diets? Seeing none. Go ahead and move forward with the agenda that we have that's been published. So we'll start with item 4A, Public Works Division: Recognition of the Public Works 2025 Rodeo Team Presentation Certificate.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Elias Archuleta, I'm Deputy County Manager for Public Works. And my part's real easy here. I'm going to introduce our team. Ms. Amot Solano is is our roads manager, road maintenance manager. And it's it's her teams and our storm drain maintenance crew that brought this home. So and we also have Antonio Aramil, our director, and they'll introduce the rest of the crew that's involved.
Good evening, Chair Olivas, Commissioners, and Madam County Manager. The New Mexico Association Counties of Heavy Equipment Rodeo is a very special event for us. Our operators participate each year and compete against operators from other counties throughout New Mexico. This year, the event was hosted in Curry County, by Curry County in Clovis, New Mexico. Equipment vendors set up obstacle courses with heavy equipment, such as motor graders, skid steers, loaders, excavators, and trucks. This year, there was 10 courses. Each course has individual winners, first place, second place, third place. And the county with the most individual wins is considered the overall champions. Bernaleo has claimed the title on Traveling Trophy, eight years since 2013, minus the COVID years. We are considered the team to beat. This event creates bonds with fellow Public Works employees throughout New Mexico. It creates bonds internally, as we root for each other, and it recognizes the skills that our employees utilize every day. Our staff competes with other counties, against other counties, but there's also internal competition. There's foremen against their staff, and then there's section to section, storm drain and roads. And I have to say, the storm drainage section really did, they did an exceptional job this year. Thank you. Operations and maintenance staff truly represent the spirit of Bernaleo County. And tonight, we recognize their individual awards, as well as our team award. And we really just want to say, we appreciate the county's continuous support in being able to participate in this event. So thank you very much. Sorry, one more thing. We do not have a high participation in tonight's meeting because we are working overtime on Moriarty Road, chip ceiling. So the guys are tired. So just wanted to note that.
I told her to say that. So, Mr. Chair, County Commissioners, Madam County Manager, I'd like to read the recognition certificate recognition. So it says, given to Public Works 2025 Rodeo Team for outstanding work at the annual heavy equipment rodeo. I apologize. I needed to put this up there. I want to give you guys a picture of the actual participants. Heavy Equipment Rodeo on June 18, 2025, sponsored by the New Mexico Association of Counties and hosted by Curry County. Public Works team members completed in the rodeo against heavy equipment operators from around the state in several events with heavy equipment, including a motor grader, front end loader, skid steer, backhoe excavator, and a dump truck. They represented Burnley County well, bringing home six individual champions championships and the overall county award and trophy. Burnley County Board of County Commissioners wants to recognize Burnco Public Works Road and Storm Drain Sections for their outstanding prowess in heavy equipment operations and winning the 2025 Heavy Equipment Rodeo. Can we stand for any questions? Well, I'm just thrilled that that we've got the best team in the state. And I know you guys are staying busy out in the East Mountains with all the rain. We've gotten on Moriarty Road, but many, many others, as we often get emails. So really proud of you all. And, you know, thank you to all of the drivers and operators that do the great work that you do. And congratulations on showing that work off. Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am, Vice Chair.
I just wanted to thank you all for your hard work and commitment. I'm really honored that we're here. We've been champs for so long. I often think of, you know, we're the big city. And so I would think that there'd be rural competition, but go, go big city, go Burnco. And I was seeing the trophy last week, trophy last week, and I was thinking, man, I told them I want to go, but it was in Curry County. So tell me next time it's closer.
Will do.
But congratulations.
All right, that's it for proclamations this evening. I'm going to read a couple of statements into the record from the closed meeting held earlier today. I offer the following statement regarding the closed meeting held Tuesday, September 9, 2025, at 1:30 PM. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting on September 9, 2025 were discussed at the closed meeting. I need a motion for approval of this statement, and it will become part of the minutes of this meeting.
Move approval?
Second, we have a motion from Commissioner Barbara Baca, a second from Commissioner Frank Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signal in the affirmative. Yes?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes on a 5-0 vote. And second statement, I move that the county attorney be authorized to proceed with matters discussed in the closed meeting held on Tuesday, September 9, 2025, within the parameters set by this commission in the closed meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signal in the affirmative. Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? That passes 5-0. So we will now move on to public comment. Each person has two minutes. You will be alerted to about your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you're speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. To maintain order and decorum and in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone present, speakers must adhere to the two-minute time limit. If the conduct of the presenter violates the rules, they may be subject to removal. Javier, if you could please call the names.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we have a total of seven speakers, all in person. If you could please line up at the podium when your name is called. We will start with Janet Sayers, followed by Debbie Thomas, followed by Dr. Geraldo Cianello.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Chair Olivas, in whose district I reside, and members of the County Commission. And I am here tonight representing the City County Library Advisory Board. And I'd like to bring to your attention something very important. And I know I'm, I know we're too late to get on the county's 2026 Capitol Outlay Big List. That will be part of what's going to the legislature. But I wanted to let you know that the Library Advisory Board is going to be presenting information to elected officials all through the county, members of the City Council, and tonight, the commission, about the main library downtown. And this is a 50-year-old building with a 50-year-old HVAC system. And it's a complicated system of vents and and ducts and blowers that mix hot and cool air. And it's basically near the end of its useful life. And what we're trying to repair it, we are talking more than $2 million. In the meantime, some days it works, some days it doesn't work. And oh goodness, speed up. Okay. So I, I wanted you to know that our library board is approaching various elected officials and asking for support in the idea that this building, it's not just a branch library. It's also the genealogical center, not only for Albuquerque and Burnley County, but many people throughout the state. It is where our friends of the library accept donations and then have monthly sales to raise over $100,000 for the children's program. And it's also the hub of what our library staff, over 25 members of the staff are there. May I just conclude very quickly?
Sure. Just go ahead.
I wanted you to know that we're trying to reach, trying to raise $2 million. We've already gotten support, 100,000 from Senator O'Malley, who represents this area, 100,000 from City Councilor Joaquin Baca, another 50,000 from State Senator Heather Bergman's for the Northeast Heights. And I will be talking to elected officials all, I mean, all over Burnley County. And then also from County Commissioner Baca, another 50,000. So we are hoping that by everyone sharing a little bit of this fundraising, if you will, that we can reach over $2 million by February of this coming year, and that we'll be able to make sure that that the HVAC system can be repaired at the downtown library. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sayers. And I just wanted to say real quickly to you as a, as a representative of the county on the Library Advisory Board. First of all, thank you. And secondly, the first year that I was here, we got a very extensive list from the, from the Library Advisory Board. It was actually by district of the various Capitol Outlay requests. Last year, we didn't get one. And I don't know why, but I just wanted to say that I thought that was very helpful. And it was something that I included when I spoke to my legislators about the different libraries in my district. So I hope that you all do that again. But I understand you're a volunteer board, and there's a lot of commitments that you already have. So just wanted to give you that input.
We will still make you aware of district projects prior to January. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sayers.
Debbie Thomas, followed by Dr. Geraldo Cianello, followed by Michael Garcia. Please line up at the podium when your name is called.
Go ahead, Mr. Cianello.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and County Commission Members. Dr. Geraldo Cianello, I am a naturalized American citizen immigrant doctor and minister. Thank you for serving. I'd like to share a letter from Christian Noem, Secretary of Homeland Security. And it says, I am writing to inform you about the Department of Homeland Security's progress in optimizing the systematic alien verification for entitlement, or SAVE program. Specifically, the DHS progress is verifying U.S. citizenship for voter eligibility purposes in support of Executive Order 14248, preserving and protecting the integrity of American election. First, we have eliminated charges for state, local, tribal, and territorial government agency to use the SAVE program. Second, we have updated the program to allow users to create queries in bulk rather than individually providing a template with standardized data fields. Required information for bulk case and entries include first name, last name, date of birth, and one or more of the following enumerators: social security number, alien number, and/or citizenship or naturalized naturalization certificate number, which I have. The significant change allows states to upload their voter rolls in bulk, streamlining the verification of U.S. citizenship for individuals registered or registering to vote in the state. Finally, we recently launched an enhancement that allows the SAVE program users to create cases using your social security number as the applicant numerator to verify citizenship or immigration status using social security numbers, eliminating the need for a DHS identifying number, which most state and local agencies do not collect. So I encourage all state and local governments to register for the SAVE program to ensure lawful voter eligibility prior verification. Sincerely, Christian Noem. Thank you, and may God bless all.
Michael Garcia, followed by Reverend Vincent Chavez, followed by Carlos Prophet.
Commissioners and County Manager's Office, my name is Michael Garcia, retired lieutenant with Burnley County Fire. This is retired Captain Gary Raleigh with Burnley County Fire. And to excuse our appearance, this is the official retirees' uniforms. But we wanted to say thank you for letting us speak. We're here on behalf, it's kind of bittersweet for us. We're here on behalf of welcoming the new chief. But the bittersweet part of it, or the bitter part of it, is that we're seeing our great chief, Greg Perez, leave. We, we've been around since the 1970s. Gary is like one of the first paramedics in this county. And I retired only about seven years ago. But we wanted to show our support to both candidates or both persons. Greg Perez, who's been very nice to us and has included us very much in keeping us up to date on what's going on. And we certainly appreciate that, chief. And we know you're not leaving, but you're, we know you'll be around. But once a chief, always a chief. So we also have a retired chief back there. He's probably a little nervous because of his pastime in the standing before the county commission. But he's okay. But we wanted, again, share and thank Chief Perez. He's been an awesome leader. Through our time with the fire department, we've seen many chiefs come and go. And some of them, we were happy to see them go. But others were very, were very saddened to see Chief Perez leave us. But we wanted to say that and welcome our new chief, Zach Lardy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Reverend Vincent Chavez, followed by Carlos Prophet, followed by Roger Valdez.
Commissioners, I'm Father Vincent Chavez from St. Therese Parish in the North Valley. I'm working with Commissioner Baca on a policy to protect immigrants in the city. I'm going to read portions of an op-ed that I wrote to the Albuquerque Journal, and it's actually concerning the Albuquerque City Council. Department of Homeland Security is now using Bible quotes in their recruitment videos for ICE agents. The video shows a helicopter with DHS Secretary Noem surrounded by ICE agents. There's rapid montage of shots, agents chasing people, terrain surveyed through night vision goggles, and the gleam of plastic zip tie handcuffs in an ICE agent's belts. They quote scripture. And, and I include a scripture, Isaiah, Chapter 16, "Hide the fugitives; do not betray the refugees; that the fugitives stay with you, be their shelter from the destroyer." Members of Albuquerque City Council and mayoral candidate White seem pro ICE and wish to give ICE agents free rein in the city to summarily arrest anyone they deem an immigrant or a refugee or a citizen enemy from within. Dear councilors Pastor Lewis, Champine, Grau, Bassan, and Sanchez, as a fellow Christian, I know that I would not want to hear from Jesus. Out of my sight, you condemned, into the eternal fire prepared for the devil and his angels; for I was a stranger, and you gave me no welcome. Say no to cruelty; say yes to assisting the unhoused and panhandlers of our city. And immigrants are too busy working two, three, four jobs to panhandle and subject themselves openly to racism and ICE arrest." So that was submitted to the Albuquerque Journal. It has not been published yet, but I wanted you to be aware of this. Thank you.
Carlos Prophet, followed by Roger Valdez, followed by James and Zach Hines.
Good afternoon, Carlos Prophet, 40-year resident of Pajarito Mesa. I'm not much of a quoter, but the man of the cloth brings it to mind. As you do to the least of mine, so you do unto me. 25 years I've been trying to get the Pajarito Mesa on the map of planet Earth, so that the first responders could have a chance of being able to get to whatever needed to be gotten to. Last time I saw Chief Perez, when they were talking about the new chief, a few months ago, he said that they were going to have another run at it. And this time, GIS was going to lead the effort, the map, the map people. For some reason, last time, they put the fire department in charge of it. I haven't heard anything from anybody, and I don't know if that's, I'm not holding my breath on any of that. But I'm down here this afternoon, y'all crucifying one of my neighbors with your nuisance abatement office. Lack of procedure, very subjective, weaponizing, everything that poor people do. And everything that we've asked, we, we, we have the Cerro Colorado landfill, and we have the Southwest landfill, and the overflow goes into the Pajarito Mesa. We're not talking out the window. We're talking 12-yard dump truck loads in the middle of the road. Burnley County BCFT, not BCFT, BCSO, they don't care. Green Team, they don't care. There's no way for us to describe the location to the first responders. There's no presence. They, they don't know. If they go out there, they get lost, the deputies, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, thank you very much.
Roger Valdez, followed by James Hines, followed by Zach Hines.
Thank you, Commissioners. Chair Olivas, I'm Roger Valdez, here on behalf of the Center for Housing Economics and East Central Ministries in the International District, to speak to you today about a couple of projects. 133 Virginia, which is a vacant medical dental building that is county-owned. And today, you'll be moving that forward in a process of donation, so that that can be turned into transitional housing. And we also just today found out that the capital outlay for that project, $500,000, has been approved by MFA. So that project is going to move forward. And we just wanted to say thank you very much, particularly Commissioner Barboa, who has been with us from the very, very beginning of this process, Commissioner Baca, as well, and just, and Commissioner Olivas, Chair Olivas, all of you have been so supportive. And we also want to thank Marcos and Carolyn at Economic Development, as well as all the staff who have been so diligent in, you know, Ken Martinez and the legal folks, in trying to craft a path forward through the process in a way that makes this easier, more efficient, and ultimately more compassionate for the people that need housing. So we're also appreciative of Manager Chavez and her work. And this is really important, and I think a trailblazing path through what otherwise has been a very difficult bureaucratic process. But we've all worked together to get to that point. So we're great, we're deeply grateful to you all for, for the work. 161 Chama received approval for 2.4 million in capital outlays. So we're going forward with that. It's a 20-unit cottage project that I know you're all supportive of. And as we move forward with that project, if there's capital outlay that, that you're going to be seeking, we're looking at about $750,000 in additional that we'll be looking for that project as well. But again, thank you all and staff, all the commissioners. We're very appreciative for this work. Thank you.
James Hines, followed by Zach Hines, followed by Miguel Tittman.
Good afternoon. I need to state nothing, or? My name's James Roger Hines Jr. I'm the father of James Hines III. His brother has the power of attorney. And we showed it to him on multiple occasions, but in their paperwork here, they claim they've never seen it. They also state that we don't have running water. And first off, to have running water, I'd need a dwelling out there. And since they won't allow me to put a dwelling out there, and I don't have running water, and all this other stuff they require me to have. We've just been fighting and fighting on this. All we were trying to do is take care of our animals out there. And I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
Zach Hines, followed by Miguel Tittman.
There's a couple things in there that aren't proper. The judge dropped the case from the no merits because he didn't go through the proper paperwork to try the file and give the notices or do any of that properly. He tried to go to the back door so he could get a judgment against us. There's several things on here that is false. All it is, is he's copying and posting, but there's no pictures here of the violations. There's no due process. We've tried meeting him, like my dad said. We do have water out there. I have several jugs, 325-gallon jugs for water, which is more than sufficient for animals. And there's a lady that has a front corner property up there, and she has the documents to show the road, the easement that goes with Shelley's Road. Or it changes names like three times. At least every time we talk to somebody, they say it's a different name on the road. But she's went back to California, and she's looking for that document to show the road isn't illegal easement as of 1919. But shit hasn't got back to us, to us on that. And like my dad said, we've tried to work with Enrique, but he waits, like, this paperwork, he put on a property at 10 o'clock at night. Staked it up on the property at 10 o'clock at night. I was, I was like, almost ran it over when I went in there to go get, I was taking water out there. And like, all my vehicles run out there. We went up to the second thing. Our property is zoned A1. We're abiding and meeting by every rule of A1. And Enrique says, well, that's not true. You have to go by A1, you have to go by C1, you have to go by residential. And I was like, well, when you go upstairs and talk to people upstairs, that's not true. We're, we're abiding by everything they told us to do upstairs when we asked for permission to store our animals and vehicles out on that property. They said the motorhome only had to be 11 feet off the front of the property. We have it about 60 feet off the front of the property. I tried to meet with you guys, but they said you guys were booked up too from the last hearing.
Thank you very much, sir.
Miguel Tittman.
Thank you, Chair Olivas and Commissioners. My name's Miguel Tittman. I'm the president of the New Mexico Professional Firefighters, representing over 2,000 firefighters in the state of New Mexico, as well as the president of IAAF Local 244, that probably represents 1,000 firefighters locally here in Albuquerque, including 300 Burnley County firefighters. And we're here today to recognize outgoing Chief Perez and all of the work that he has put into this great department. We came in around the same time, Chief Perez, around 2004. I've seen you're, you're a natural leader, and it's been proven in your tenure here in Burnley County, proving, continuing to step up in different positions, including the DCA of Public Safety, which you're going to have your hands full with that. And I applaud you for stepping up into that role. When, you know, when we had certain conversations about, you know, who the next fire chief was, we were hoping that you were going to continue with your fire chief. No offense, Mr. Lardy, Zach Lardy. But we were really hoping that you'd stick around just because your, your experience is irreplaceable. You know, from, all the way from Los Rancho's Department and elevating that department to all of the things that you have been able to accomplish. all of the things that you have been able to accomplish and that we've been able to accomplish together through labor management and a mutual respect amongst our rank and file, which are here represent, represented to, to see you off, as well as your executive, executive staff that is here to see you off. Just the, the, the ability to, you know, work with all the parties to, to raise this department to where it is right now is, is really something to be celebrated. So on behalf of the, the IAFF Local Two Forty Four and the NMPFA, we're really going to miss you. You sat on the, as you were the Chair of the Metro Fire Chiefs, which is a very influential and important committee in fire, the fire service in New Mexico. And, you know, that's just one example of, of ways that you've led the fire service in New Mexico. So we're really going to miss your tenure as a fire, as a fire chief. I think your, your membership will always call you chief. I'll always call you chief and we appreciate all the work that you've done. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This concludes our public comment.
Thank you very much Javier and thank you to all the speakers that came out this evening. And now Madam County Manager Cindy Chavez is going to take a few minutes to talk about our departing fire chief.
Good evening to the Chair and Vice Chair and to all of the Commission. I am really excited to be here before you. There are many, many important inflection points in community and in counties. But one of the most important is the naming of a fire chief and frankly, the gratitude that we show to leaders who've come before us. And with that, tonight marked such an important point because this was such an important issue for all of us, the rigor and care that went into this process was really pretty incredible and I want to share that with you. And I might ask Kristin to come help me with my homework while I do that. Thank you. Let me start by saying that in February, Chief Perez announced that he was going to step down being our fire chief. Now I just want to remind all of you that while I was very disappointed, I, I was relatively new, I'd been here an hour when he told me that. What I, what I really grew to understand is the deep and abiding love and respect that Chief Perez has both for the county, but for the men and women of the fire department. And so because of that, he carried on two really critical roles at, at really the behest of my predecessor, Julian Morgan Baca, because he was both the fire chief and our DCM for public safety. In addition to that, at one point he did all of that and he was in charge of the Behavioral Health Initiative. That is, and, and part of it, I kept telling him, stop saying yes, that would have been my advice to you. But the fact is that he carried the weight of many, many responsibilities for the county. Following his announcement, he agreed to continue to serve as a fire chief. Now, we, I, I just want to, before I invite the fire chief up, I, I just want to say a couple more things about you, chief. And that is that the leadership that he demonstrated through all of these different activities was so greatly appreciated. And because of that, we wanted to, we're so excited and I'm really excited to, to introduce our new chief. But we really wanted to take the time to, to thank the chief for all of his work. So we're happy to be joined tonight by the chief's wife, Victoria, and his daughters Solara and Celica. His parents, Susan and Phil Baca, and I should just say, well done, you did a good job. And sisters Leandra and Sonia, and if they could stand for a moment, his family, let's give them a big round of applause. Before we, before I get to the next phase, what I'd like to do is play a little video that recognizes Chief Perez's amazing work and then I'm going to invite him and his family up for a presentation.
Here's at the helm, Chief Greg Perez is passing the torch, leaving behind a legacy of leadership, service and innovation at Burnaliel County Fire Rescue. Chief Perez began his fire service career in nineteen ninety-eight as a volunteer with the Village of Los Rancho's. By two thousand and five, he was appointed chief of that department. When BCFR assumed command in two thousand and nine, he continued his service as battalion commander, again, rising through the ranks.
Burnaliel County Fire Department officially has a new chief. Chief Greg Perez was sworn in this morning.
During his tenure, Chief Perez oversaw tremendous growth.
Place engine thirty-two in service. This is the newest addition to our family.
BCFR expanded its fleet, increased staffing by about twenty-five percent, growing to more than three hundred members and opened the state of the art public safety training academy.
In our careers, we get opportunities like this very, very seldom. I've been fortunate enough to have an opportunity now twice in the last six months. Once with the opening of Station Thirty-nine on the Sandia Pueblo and now this training academy. So I couldn't be more happy of, or proud of all of the work that we've done as a county.
Under his leadership, historic agreements were also secured to expand services in TiJerez, La Madera and on sovereign Sandia Pueblo land.
Said, I need you to partner with Sandia Pueblo to bring a fire department to fruition there. And we did it. And I thank you for trusting me with such an important item.
A new fire station was also added on the metro's growing west side.
We're probably five to six years overdue to have a station of this size and this magnitude out here with all that's grown up around us, but now we will be able to take what was taken twenty-five minutes response time to MDC to seven.
And funding was secured to relocate Station Thirty-six, breaking ground this spring.
This station alone has ran about forty-eight hundred calls in the last year, so the need is definitely there. Moving it to this location will now allow us to have a more rapid response because we will be pulling onto a main thoroughfare rather than navigating our way through a neighborhood.
Through a partnership with the City of Albuquerque, Chief Perez also initiated the automatic aid program, ensuring emergency services are delivered immediately, regardless of jurisdictional boundaries. Beyond the buildings and apparatus, Chief Perez put people first. In twenty nineteen, he introduced clean cab initiatives.
My job is to protect our members today, but more importantly, to protect my members twenty years, twenty-five years from now so that they can go out and enjoy a happy retirement.
And in twenty twenty, as the world faced the COVID nineteen pandemic, he guided Burnaliel County through unprecedented times, even personally administering more than three thousand vaccinations. Mental health initiatives were also a top priority as he ensured critical resources were always within reach for every member of the department.
And I would say reflecting, my biggest achievement is really bringing that out and making it okay to talk.
And his service hasn't stopped with Burnaliel County, serving as the Chair of the Metro Fire Chiefs for seven years, Chair of the State Fire Advisory for two years and as the point person for the Federal Line of Duty Death Benefit Program through the Department of Justice. Though stepping down as fire chief, he remains committed to Burnaliel County as a deputy county manager, continuing to guide public safety.
I feel that our department is in the best place that it could possibly be right now and there's not a better time to throw that touchdown pass and, and walk out on top as it is now. And I really truly feel that that's where, where we're at as a department. And I look forward to helping, you know, the, the next chief, he or she, with what their challenges will be.
Thank you. And if I could ask your family to join you?
Chair Commissioners, Madam County Manager, thank you. It has been one heck of a journey, seven years of a journey, highs and lows and everything in between. But none of that is impossible without the support that I've had ongoing from, of course, my family first and foremost. But also all of the men and women that make up the ranks and non-ranks of the Burnaliel County Fire Department. So I would like all of them to please stand and be recognized. We don't do this journey alone. It, it takes good, strong men and women at our side, allowing us to work alongside them every day. And that's exactly what I've had. I've gotten the opportunity to work alongside some of the best men and women, both past and present in Burnaliel County Fire and Rescue. And I'm super excited as, as you hear so often that any good leader, how they hang their hat at the end of their career is if they've been able to pass the torch on to somebody who grew up together with them. And Chief Zach Lardy has been by my side for six years. So thank you all.
And so this gift is from everybody. And, and it really is, it's intended to be fun. And, and because of that, there's some candy in it. But this is from all of us and we just wanted to say a very sincere thank you. And I was hoping we could invite the family up to take a picture with our Commissioners. So would you go forward and, and congratulations? Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Congratulations. Good boy. I wanted to give any member of the Commission through the Chair an opportunity to speak at this point.
Chief Perez, I, I want to just express to you, your family and our entire Burnaliel County Fire Department, what an incredible honor and privilege it's been to serve with you in the brief time that I've been here. The, the accomplishments achieved over the entire tenure of your career are, are just, you know, really incredible. And Chief Lardy has some very big shoes to fill. Because just in the two years that I've been here, the, the number of major accomplishments of you and the men and women of your department are outstanding. I mean, opening two new stations, a new training academy and continuing to build new stations. Looking at the, the compensation that, that we're providing for our department, growing the department. Just incredible leadership and, and frankly, on, on a more, I guess, a more personal level. When Commissioner Baca and I came into, to office, you know, we sat down with you and we talked about different issues and initiatives that we had in mind. And, and you were eager and, and able to produce, I still have it in my office, I know where it is, a document that really went through all of, of the different departments that you oversee and, and the different needs and, and ideas that you had and incorporating our feedback. And, and that always struck with me, that, that you were incredibly responsive and incredibly articulate. And, and there's a reason why you were asked to lead all of these critical initiatives because you're that kind of person that can handle that and that can produce a really high quality product and, and deliver those services. Just an incredible leader. So just want to appreciate your leadership. Glad that you're not gone entirely and in fact, you'll be supporting our new fire chief and continuing to support that program. But just wanted to express my, my gratitude and on behalf of all the residents of the East Mountain area that, that your services, the services of our fire department are critical in that area. Incredible gratitude and appreciation for your service. Chairman Olivas, thank you. It has been an absolute true honor.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, you'll always be chief when I call you. And, and Chief Lardy, I, I look forward to work with you as well. I just want to say, I think County Manager said it well that you should have said no, but I'm glad you didn't. I don't know how you've done it all, honestly. Such big roles and you've done it so well. And I've, I've told the story many times how the fire department, Burnaliel Fire Department was at my house at two in the morning, within five minutes, when, when minutes mattered. And you helped us get a new station in Sandia Pueblo. When you were already actually serving that area anyway with your, with the fire department. And, but it, it hasn't just been the fire department though. We've just been in good hands with you. And we've been safe and there's a peace of mind that, that people have. And they may not know that you're a big reason behind it, but you are. And I thank you for it. And, and to the Perez family, thank you for, for sharing your husband. I'm sure you, you've told him to say no a few times. But thank you for everything you've done. I appreciate it.
Chair, Commissioner Benson, thank you so much. Again, such an honor to serve. We're, we're proud. We're proud three hundred and twenty-three men and women out there every day. They give everything they've got when they, when they clock into that, that job and then some after. It, it's been a great ride having the partnership with the union and I thank President Tidman for his kind words. Relationships are what it's all about. And I've, I really thrived to, to keep those relationships strong because you never know who you're going to have to call on at any given time. So again, thank you, Commissioner Benson.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Thank you Chair and Chief Perez, thank you so much. I have grown to learn how strong, passionate and caring your heart is. I think we have learned each other's hearts and I'm so grateful for how strong and passionate yours is for our communities. I, when I first got on, you were the person that I would call and you'd always answer. I remember calling really late one time and you answered. I recall really early one time and you answered. And I didn't expect it, but I was so grateful that you did. And I had lots of questions and you were always available to answer them. I also came on during the peak of COVID and had seen what you all had already done to make ours, our whole county better. I know that was large part due to your leadership, that things ran so smoothly during that very difficult time. And I'll never forget the time that I was actually at a and everybody talks about how well the county runs our programs, how good our fire is, how, and, and I agree. And I'll never forget the time I was actually just getting out of taco truck and getting, it was late. And I witnessed somebody got hit by a moving bus on a bike. And all of us were on the phone calling nine-one-one and we could not even get through to dispatch. Like dispatch would not answer our calls. And so I was like, well, I'm going to call Chief Perez and I did. And within literally four minutes, we had a fire department there taking care of what was happening on the ground before anyone else was on the scene. So I'll thank you so much for your service and I'm glad you're still with us and thanks for your time.
Madam Vice Chair, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief Perez, you're hearing a theme here, but I want to add my little story. I really appreciate your professionalism, your intellect, but mostly that you're a leader with heart. And I really discovered that these last few years working with you. And my story is, I, I live backing onto the Bosque in the city limits. And a fire started and I was at my sister's house and we were seeing this fire seemingly coming close to our property and she was like, what do we do? I don't know. I know the fire chief. So I called you and this is a city, there was a city, you know, then the, the city trucks were there, et cetera. But you work so closely with the, the, the city AFR and you know how much I value that working relationship between the county and the city. And yes, indeed, you picked up that call at something like nine-thirty PM with the, with the flames licking the top of the, of the cottonwood. So thank you for that and thank you for your years of service and, and thank you, family Perez, for sharing your wonderful man with us.
Chair, Commissioner Baca, thank you so much. It's a pleasure as always.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Sure, thank you. Just I'd like to add to that, what I've heard, that being the newest member on the Commission, so far I haven't had the opportunity, the need to call you. I feel confident now that I will have a great response if I do so need to, which hopefully not be the case. But I would like to say, I would like to observe that. You know, when I first came on board, I tried to tour as many facilities, I'm still doing that as I possibly can, just to understand how government works and the people involved. And, and I've been very impressed by the structures that have been built throughout the county that you had a hand in. But I've been more impressed by your concern for your employees. And when you told me that you were looking at this wellness program that included, you know, the fire the fire department included animal care workers. You start talking about in terms of, you know, how we could transfer that to the sheriff's department and quite frankly, to all our employees, I think is setting the tone for doing that. And I think that's, you know, that is so important to recognize. You know, we all have our limits in terms of how much we can do and how many hours of the day. But to show that concern and dedication to your employees and your coworkers and colleagues is very impressive. So thank you for all you have done. Appreciate it very much.
Chair, Commissioner Baca, thank you.
All right, one last time, thank you, Chief.
I also just wanted to say a very special thank you to Kristen Ferguson for the beautiful video and also to Angela and Rita for making sure that the gift was gorgeous. So over the last several months, we have conducted a really extensive search process. And one of the reasons that I wanted to make sure I raise this with all of you is that, as you know, there is always a, an instinct to just look inward and not necessarily do the nationwide searches, like turn over every leaf to try to find the best and the brightest. And I really firmly believe that Burnley County, in every single position, deserves to hire servant leaders. People who represent this county, not only because they have a good heart, but also their ability to provide excellence to the service we provide because we are obligated to do that for the people that we're, that we sign up to say, we've got your back, count on us. And when we say that, it should have meaning. So what we did was a national search. And I do really want to just lift up Bernadette, Cindy Weaselbear and Jackie because this was a little bit different than we've done these searches before. And so we started by asking people to give us feedback, even to the job description. Like what were people thinking? How did they feel about their department? What did they want to see into the future? The position was promoted on every platform we could get it promoted on. An additional outreach was concentrated in New Mexico and Texas and surrounding states. On the 19th of May, we put, did a community input session to gather feedback from residents about qualities and priorities and leadership of what people wanted to see in their next fire chief. And I just want to acknowledge that the retirees came out and forced to tell us what they wanted. So thank you. Give them a round of applause. The application period opened on May 26th and we received 28 applications from across the country, including Hawaii and Florida. The pool was then narrowed down to 10 candidates and the first round of interviews were conducted in late August. In August, the county announced the top three candidates, which included Jonathan Cohn, Joel Gallegos. Let's give him a round of applause, our fire chief, amazing. And Zach Lardy. Each finalist brought unique strengths and I just want to acknowledge the dedication and professionalism that each of them demonstrated through the process because it was very rigorous. And let me just describe it to you. On August 27th, a meet the candidate event was held with the fire rescue personnel. And this allowed candidates to introduce themselves and answer questions directly from crews, from the line staff. We had participation from almost 100 individuals, both in person, online and online. And then they were able to give us feedback on a QR code. I read every single one of their messages back to us to give us their perspective. In addition to that, the panel that we had that did all of the interviews included fire chiefs from other counties here, including Albuquerque, Santa Fe and Valencia. And we had a community panel member on it and the sheriff participated as well. So later that evening, they were invited to meet and greets and they had a great showing from fire rescue retirees and community members who wanted to give their, to meet the candidates and also give feedback. On the 28th of August, they did an onsite assessments. And this included mock news conferences where the candidates were questioned by former journalists regarding mock scenarios. Candidates also participated in leadership group exercises. They role played exercises. These exercises tested problem solving, oral communication and interpersonal skills. They went through an awful lot and all of the candidates in the final three that I met with were prepared, really prepared to lead this organization. After the, after all of that, on August 29th, Chief Perez and I interviewed the final three candidates. And after this rigorous process, and a process, by the way, I just want to emphasize why it was so important. We deserve the best and if the best comes from our ranks, even better. And with that, I want to just say how excited I am to interview, to introduce our fire chief of Burnley County Fire Rescue, Zachary Lardy. So we don't have any walk-up music, so I'm just going to read a little bit of his bio. Chief Lardy has served as Burnley County Fire Rescue for 19 years, including five years as deputy chief. He's risen through the ranks, bringing proven operational leadership, a deep understanding of how the department works and a deep and abiding commitment to the men and women who serve the department. Chief Lardy will officially assume the role of chief tomorrow. We gave him a whole four days. I am so excited and we are so confident about his leadership that Burnley County Fire Rescue will continue to grow stronger, more innovative and even more responsive to the needs of our residents. I'm so excited to introduce him and also his boys are here, his wife too, but his boys are adorable. So I'm hoping he's going to invite them up to introduce them as well. Welcome. Oh, you're already here. Yay. Oh, that's wonderful.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for having us up here today. This is truly a momentous event for our entire family. I can't thank Madam County Manager enough for the trust that you're placing in me for the safety and the, of the community at large and also the men and women of Burnley County Fire and Rescue. It is truly the honor of my life to act in this public service capacity as a public servant at heart, from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for this trust. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize my family and their, throughout this entire room, the support that I've felt over the last several months and over my entire 19-year career working for Burnley County Fire and Rescue is unmatched, in my opinion. I've seen, I've seen something similar in Chief Perez. And like you said, like you said, Mr. Chair, I have pretty massive shoes to fill. I'm not going to fill those alone. I have an entire family here that's helped, that's going to help me fulfill that public service. Caleb and Nolan, I'm sure will have some role as well. And my wife, my wife Mia, has been, has been an unending supporter of me throughout this journey as we've got to this point. Again, I can't thank you enough, Chief Perez, for the leadership and the mentorship getting us to this point and for making our fire department what it is. You've made the start of my job easy. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we have a long and successful tenure together. And again, I'm super grateful that I get to start this, start this journey with you helping continue to mentor me. I think it's important that I also recognize the command staff that I'm taking over from Chief Perez, that he helped or that he has put in place to support me and also the command staff that supports the men and women of Burnley County Fire and Rescue every day. We know that their sacrifices are often unheard, but I can tell you that they are appreciated. And from the bottom of my heart to all of you, thank you for the support that I've felt through this entire process. And I, again, I also want to recognize the other, the other two candidates. John Cohn and Chief Joel Gallegos, our division chief of our Fire Prevention Bureau and our current, our current fire marshal. They, this, it has been an honor to go through this process with you. So thank you. Thank you for what you've done to get us here. I take over at a great time. I'm really lucky. Our department has continually grown. We are stable, we're financially stable. We have the resources that we need to do this job. My job is going to be to continue this, continue this effort going forward. My intent is to carry the mission of the organization. That mission is to provide a positive impact through dynamic services for our community and its neighbors. That is important to me. That is, that is within my heart as a public servant and that is core to what we do. We do that through making sure that we carry out the values of the organization, excellence, professionalism, integrity. And as you've heard, as you've heard a lot about tonight, compassion. Compassion for our people, compassion for our personnel, our employees and also compassion for those that we serve, that need us and that we constantly rise to the occasion, that I'm constantly humbled by this, by the service that our people provide. I am proud to lead this organization, proud to lead it into the future. Together with this management team, I'm confident that we're ready for this next chapter. It's going to have some challenges, but I know that we're, we're ready to handle this. Madam County Manager, thank you for this opportunity to serve in this capacity and thank you for your trust. Dad, if you want to come up.
If we want, any family members that want to come up, we want to just take a quick photo.
I need that number. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chief Lardy. All right, next up, we have our Community Services Division, the Burnley County Extension Services. It's going to give us a presentation on the work they do and we have Program Director John Garish.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission. Dinet Townsend, Deputy County Manager for Community Services. And I'm just here to introduce the wonderful John Garish, who is our Cooperative Extension Office Agent. And he is here to do one of our biannual presentations about all of the amazing and incredible work that they do that nobody ever knows about. So we'll all be wowed.
Thank you, Chair Olivas. Thank you, fellow commissioners. Thank you, County Manager. Thank you, Dinet, for the introduction. And John Garish, I'm the County Program Director here for the Extension Office and here to bring some of our spring and summer highlights for you all. And thank you for the time to be here today. So we just finished up with county fair and our kids are currently in state fair mode right now. So our county fair is held on the state fairgrounds. We also had lots of events. We also had staff come out to the county fair. We had make and takes for some of our youth development programs coming out. We had a lot of daycare centers. We had our indoor exhibits. We also had our small animal exhibits, which is our largest for animals. So we have more chickens and rabbits than we do all the other large livestock. So it's good to have, especially for the urban area, it's great to have all livestock represented. But overall, it teaches kids the skills of stewardship, empathy, how to take care of things, how to manage things. And whenever an animal squawks for water and feeding, helps them become good parents later on when the kids all squawk at for food and water. For our state contest, we had an FCS, which is Family Consumer Sciences, are going on to our national competition in Texas this winter. As well as we had three youth from our county represented to the state 4H leadership team. So they're going to be representing New Mexico and Burnley County all throughout. And their first official event was to meet the UK ambassador staff here at the state fairgrounds. And if you didn't know, New Mexico is the fourth, UK is the fourth largest buyer of all New Mexico products. So they got to meet the UK ambassadors to help promote products from here in Albuquerque and New Mexico. For our urban 4H, we have eight to chick. We have three, over almost 4,000 youth in 27 schools incubating eggs. And the kids get to read stories to the eggs as they're incubating. So it teaches literacy to the kids, but also the development of the eggs and also how things develop. Our Kirtland Air Force Base, we got $17,000 in grants to reach 68 youth and also do a 4H leadership camp. Hydroponics, we helped out with over 1,500 youth and over 40, over 2,000 youth are being reached with our 4H in the schools. And this has been a national program in which Stephanie Treadwell is at one of the schools. I forgot which one she's at at the moment, but what she's noticed in some of her schools is attendance rates has increased, behavior rates have decreased and kids are getting their schoolwork done and test scores have been improving in some of the schools where we have 4H in the schools, where what they saw is unless you finish your work and participate well, you can't do the 4H project. So it's been an incentive for them to get better attendance and better homework and school rates all around. And this year, we took 25 middle school youth down to Aggie Nextup. I believe it was, I met, I, we had from various schools, from a lot of our Title I schools for kids that don't have outreach, we took them down and they got to tour NMSU campus. So hopefully we can get more kids down to NMSU campus through our youth program and reaching out to our urban kids. For agriculture and horticulture, we have our Master Gardener Program. We have over 400 master gardeners in the county. And we have two gardens that are producing local produce and donating to the Roadrunner Food Bank. This statistic was from two and a half weeks ago. This has now increased by at least 300 to 400 pounds. So we should be up to 1,500 pounds of produce being donated to the Roadrunner Food Bank to give for people in need. I myself, along with the Horticulture Agent and Master Gardeners, have been doing a lot of site visits for turf and landscapes all around the county, as well as I've been helping our Burnley County open space down the South Valley for the Grow the Growers Program, now in its 10th year going, which is fantastic. I've been helping out with business planning, soil health and also helping to get more fruits and vegetables produced, but also teaching them about insects, weeds and sustainable production for agriculture. And we'll be finishing up our season here shortly and in early October, they have to give business presentations for their small farms. So hopefully you'll be able to make it out for that too. For our Family Consumer Sciences, we have our Health and Wellness. We are launching our Senior Get Fit. That's been in our, at the 4H building currently, but we are now expanding to the South Valley and out to the Harris. This is a peer-to-peer mentorship for seniors to how to exercise, but how to age gracefully, but also how do you keep up your strength, but fall gracefully and rebound from those falls. So it's a great way for peer-to-peer, especially for seniors who see a lot of young kids doing exercises in which they could. We've had a lot better participation to, for seniors to senior share in that woe. And so it's a volunteer training program, but we're bringing weights as well as train staff down to the South Valley and to the Harris to really enhance many of our senior programs throughout the state. Our diabetes education, we just finished up our summer diabetes classes. We're getting ready to launch in October for our next ones and scheduling out for next winter and spring. So adapting healthy recipes, we had soul eating and green chili eating while eating diabetic. So how do you tape, adapt the recipes that are meaningful to people, but make them healthy for both salt and sugar, but how do we get exercise also included? So this is a great program. On a, we're also, SNAP education has had some challenges, as you may know from our federal level. We do get some of our funding from the federal with that. We had the federal funding for IC. some of our funding from the federal with that. We had the federal funding for ICAN cut. We did lose one position directly with that, and some of our outreach has been impacted. Right now, we're waiting on the new governor's special session. They're hoping to restore some of that funding. So hopefully, we do have enough funding to get through the end of the calendar year, but hopefully, we can get that restored and get back on track for 2026, because especially with eating healthy on a limited budget, that is needed no matter what. And hopefully, we can get the funding for that, as well as to continue that education outreach to our low-income families and our Spanish-speaking populations. Also, we have our Master Food Preservers. We've offered over 80 low-cost workshops throughout the county and have been supporting our local food engineers. So from our jams and jellies and salsas, our candy classes, we've been doing a lot, jerky, smoking meats. We have 350 hours of food safety training, and our volunteers have generated over $40,000 in impacts of reaching out to the community for folks. So this has been great. We are now the leaders in this, but launching out into seven counties throughout New Mexico, and we've gotten the regional and national awards for our Master Food Preserver Education Training, which has been fantastic to see. So with that, just like to thank you all for your continued support. We are looking forward to the development of the Sandia Ranch to enhance, especially with the age of the 4-H Building and getting more up-to-date technology and up-to-date facilities for us to do more outreach and help do a better quality of programming to help serve everybody. So thank you again for your time, and thank you for your continued support. And now I give it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garish, and thank you for your presentation and all the great work that you guys do in our community. A really good example of prevention and intervention. It doesn't always have to be exactly what we might think of with, you know, mental health, behavioral health, some of the issues that we have in our community, but all health is connected, all well-being is connected. And so I think you do an amazing job of building a program that does that for our community. And on a personal level, your consultations and, you know, the work you do, actually helping people grow things and, you know, fix things in the environment, is deeply appreciative and deeply effective. So anybody that's having problems with turf or trees or plants in their yard, you all are an amazing resource among so many other things that you do. So.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Garish, thank you so much for being here, and I really appreciate the succinct but very voluminous work that you actually do in a short presentation. But I particularly wanted to thank you for your participation and your partnership with the county as we're going through this transition. And there's two items on our agenda today. One is the sale of the Indian Public Cultural Center and appropriation of that money, where you are currently located at 12 Thiminal in my district. And then on our consent agenda is moving forward on the next phase of Sandia Ranch, which is also further north on Edith and Osuna, which you are going to land in. But I just wanted to say how important to my colleagues the Extension Service has been in this partnership and understanding that this transition and this growth and this movement really is going to impact all of Burnley County. I mean, even in the state, you are leaders. And so in the valley and protecting our Aseca culture, our agrarian culture, and, you know, the kiddos, you know, participating in this, being better students is just all good, very holistic, as the chair said. So thank you for your work.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca.
Vice Chair Barboah.
I just wanted to take that opportunity to say thank you again. I got a similar, maybe even more in-depth presentation, and I am really continually amazed at all the things the county does that we don't always get to hear about. So thank you. I look forward to, I would love to go to the County Fair. I would love to participate. No more about. I'll pay more attention. But thank you for doing it so much.
You're welcome, Commissioner Barboah, and everyone is welcome at any time. So please come by. We're glad to host anybody.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Garish.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Before we, yeah, let's give a round of applause to John. So before we conclude public comment here, the will of the commission here, if anybody objects, but Ms. Thomas, Ms. Debbie Thomas, you were called early on in the list, and I know you got here a little late. So we'll give you two minutes, no more, but we'll give you a couple of minutes.
Thank you so much. The traffic was absolutely horrific. There was two accidents, and then it was bottlenecked at the Big Eye, and it took me so long to get over here from the East Mountains. Good evening. Thank you all so much for hearing me out tonight. Thank you, Commissioners. I did send you an email following up after the last commission meeting. My name is Debbie Thomas, and I am the creator of Eternal Angel Poster Projects. And I always have to bring some with me, because this is where the project started for me back two years ago in February, when I came to a meeting and I felt like people needed to see all of our children who have died from this drug war and the chemicals coming from China. So had we known, had I known four years ago when my son Addison passed away that this is exactly what was going on, I would have understood so much better back then what I know now. And I have to get to DC. On September 27, I have almost 400 posters to ship, and I'm riding on the wing of the Lost Voices of Fentanyl, the largest 501(c)(3) in the fentanyl fight. And then before that, I was invited to show on September 27 with the Trail of Truth, which we just had in Chimaio a couple of weeks ago. And as Manager Lisa Cityon White knows, we were there. She was there. Her people were there. We had just an amazing showing. And so I did bring some papers today just to show you the numbers of what I've collected as to what it's going to cost to ship my posters and my H stakes. And then Trail of Truth has paid for my hotel and my airfare. I do have my airfare coming, going back the second time. And then I'd like a nice tablecloth that I designed so that I'm represented well when I'm there. Thank you so much. Let me, can I grab those papers and hand them to you?
Yes, if you give those papers to Javier there in the corner, he'll pass them to us. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. You're welcome. All right. Madam Clerk, could you please provide resolution numbers for, or a resolution number for Item 6D?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 6D is FR 2025-88.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
So the Consent Agenda has been published and made available to the public, and all resolutions have been introduced at a previous meeting. Therefore, I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signal in the affirmative. Yes?
Hi.
Yes.
Any opposed? That passes 5-0. And there are no Consent Agenda withdrawals this evening, so that takes us to our adoption of ordinance and amendments to county code. Madam Clerk, could you please provide ordinance numbers for Items 8A, 8B, and 8C?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 8A is Ordinance 2025-26. 8B is Ordinance 2025-27, and 8C is Ordinance 2025-28.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
All right. And Director Gonzalez, we're going to be hearing from you on all three of these items. So first up is Item A, the Amendment to the Burnley County Affordable Housing Ordinance.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So this is amending our affordable housing ordinance that basically takes out that we have to do an ordinance, do an ordinance, to do an ordinance for a project. So this is going to make that, amending it, to make it a lot more streamlined, so we can do our, not only our projects we're working with the state on, but any other projects like our project with ECM this evening, and we'll be talking about later in the meeting, that it makes the process go a lot smoother. So this will make, this is essentially that amendment. After we pre-approval tonight, which I'm hoping we do, then we'll go to MFA to get their approval as well. We've already discussed this with them as well. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Commissioners, any questions or a motion?
I move to approve.
Second. So we have a motion from the Vice Chair, second from the Chair. Any discussion on the ordinance to approve an ordinance, which we will no longer have to do?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right. Seeing none. All those in favor, signal in the affirmative?
Hi.
Yes?
Hi.
All right. Any opposed? That passes on a 5-0 vote. And Mr. Gonzalez, tell us about Item B, Family Promise.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the only project we're having to do the ordinance, to do an ordinance for an ordinance. So this is a housing project that we're working with on Family Promise. The county is going to be allocating $500,000 to aid them in their capital stack to purchase an existing triplex that will house families in need. The, as you can see here, most, they already have all the additional capital that's needed for this project. It'll be located in the International District. And after this is done, we'll work very quickly to work with the county team to transfer the funds over, and they'll begin purchasing the property and begin some minor renovations that are needed, and that families will start to be housed. But with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director. We'll go to the sponsor, the Vice Chair first.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Director Gonzalez. Very excited to support this. Would like to move for approval and ask my colleagues to stand with me.
A second. Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. All right. Seeing none. All those in favor, signal in the affirmative. Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? None. Passes 5-0. And Director, take us to Item 3, Project Revenue Bonds for Casitos del Camino.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. This is a part of a project revenue bond, which again, for the public's iteration, for anybody less than new, this is an affordable housing tool we have at Economic Development that allows developers to use low-income housing tax credits, which are federal tax credit, and issue bonds for the tax exemption. In this case, we're working with the Apparke Housing Authority, which is already has tax exemption. This project is for 48, 42 units that will be refurbished and additional 46 units that will be added. The commission has already approved this ordinance to allow for the project to happening, but what we're doing is extending the date, because they're still working on their HUD approvals. And with the delays they've been experiencing with HUD, the ordinance would expire, so this only improves the extension of the dates to allow them to make those closures. I would like to let the commission know that Linda Bridge, Executive Director of the Apparke Housing Authority is here as well, in case there's any questions. But with that, I'll stand for questions.
All right. Thank you, Director. Any questions? I'll make a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from the Vice Chair. Any discussion, Commissioners? So this actually spurred a quick question for me. I'm kind of a nerd, and I watch the city council meetings a lot, more than I should probably. And this came up this past week, I think. And one of the city councilors, I believe, Councilor Sanchez, who represents that area, was talking about all of the vacant units on 60th Street. Are these vacant, as far as you know?
The existing units, Mr. Chair, I believe, are filled in, but I'll have to ask Linda Bridge. And then the, they'll be constructing 46 new units as well.
My apologies for putting you on the spot here. Just curious about this.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, currently, these units are vacant. We had anticipated closing on funding and starting construction a long time ago, unfortunately, have had many delays. So the families have been temporarily relocated at this time. So the units are vacant. We have experienced many problems with vandalism, trespassers, and are doing, we've got security on site. We're working closely with ACS and APD to try to secure these units, but all the more importantly, just trying to get the funding closed and for this project to get across the finish line, because it'll be a great benefit to the neighborhood once we can get the rehabilitation and new construction completed.
Great. I really appreciate that. Any other questions, Commissioners?
And, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, we've done our approvals, and State Port of Finance has done their approvals, and Mortgage Finance Authority has done their approvals. We're really just waiting on HUD to do their approvals, so they can begin the construction pieces. So.
Understood. I think that's a really helpful thing for us to learn tonight. And actually, as I remember that conversation, the finger was actually pointed at the county, and it was actually said in the meeting, I think incorrectly, that the county owned this property, which it sounds like neither the city or the county owns it. AHA owns this and is in the process of redeveloping. So I learned something very, very helpful here. Thank you. All right. Seeing no further discussion. There's been a motion and a second for this extension, hopefully getting some federal HUD funding in place to complete this project. Seeing no further. All those in favor, signal in the affirmative. Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0 vote. Thank you, Ms. Bridge. Thank you, Director.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, for the record, for the items under Section 8, so adoption of the ordinance, there were no signups for the public hearing items.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah.
Next up, we have adoption of resolutions. Madam Clerk, could you please provide resolution numbers for Item 9A and 9B?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 9A is AR 2025-89, and 9B is AR 2025-90.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. And first up, we're going to have our second hearing of the New Mexico Legislature Capital Outlay Priorities, and we have Ms. Kathy Court to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Olivas, Vice Chair Barboah, Commissioners, County Manager, and colleagues. Before you tonight is our final, or a request for final approval of administrative resolution establishing Burnley County's 2026 capital outlay priorities. This was introduced at your August 19 meeting. This is pretty much the same presentation I gave you on August 19, but just a real quick recap. The county's 2027, 2031 ICIP was adopted by this board as AR 2025-74 on June 24 of 2025. It was from the ICIP that we called down that list to develop what's presently on your agenda for approval tonight, which is your top capital outlay priorities for the 2026 New Mexico Legislature. Based on your feedback received during that August 19 meeting, and since then, we've made some minor adjustments to the resolution in front of you. In terms of our countywide projects, we still have Mesa del Sol, Phase 4, El Centro and Sebo Village, and county maintained roads in the South Valley and North Valley, listed as our top four priorities. Under public safety, we have the Youth Services Center expansion of intake and release areas, the BCSO Advanced Public Safety Training Center, the BCSO's Technology for Crime Prevention, the Second Judicial District Courthouse improvements, and finally, we combined our Animal Care Services request into one, and we really expanded the language so that we can do multiple things with the Animal Care Services, dependent on what they decide to do next, to alleviate their their issues at the site and possibly expand. In District 1, we've got Sandia Ranch, near North Valley Center for All Ages, Second Street ADA sidewalks, Lomas de Etrisco Trail Study, Ed Sandoval Baseball Complex, Tahajali Multipurpose Community Center, and asbestos removal and waterline replacement. We've got a perimeter multi-use trail at John Adams Middle School and the Roots Room, a Rio Grande Food Project. In District 2, we have storm drains and flooding issues leading our list. At the top of those lists, among those identified projects are Sunset Road, Barcelona Road Storm Drain Project, and a slotted drain trail. We've also got some road projects, infrastructure for the Aldea del Rio Housing Project. Parks and Rec projects are combined into one request, and we added South Course Traffic Lights to the District 2 list. Oops, went the wrong way, sorry. Under District 3, we have our Housing Mobile Community Center and Urban Open Space and Alleyways listed. District 4 is the Raymond G. Sanchez Community Center, Altamont and Paradise Hills Baseball Complexes. District Four is the Raymond G. Sanchez Community Center, Altamont and Paradise Hills Baseball Complexes, the Paradise Hills ADA Sidewalks, and some street projects, uh, including ADA sidewalks in the Paradise Hills neighborhood. And finally, in District Five, we have Los Vasinos Community Center, the Chip Seal and East Mountain Roads, Sadio Ridge Open Space, East Mountain Sports Complex, and Honor Royal, and some road projects as well. The next steps from here is, um, upon final approval, we can start working with our contract lobbyists to, um, meet with lawmakers, start advertising what these top priorities are for Burnleal County. Because we are in a short thirty-day session, it is, um, anticipated that the deadline for lawmakers to submit their, uh, funding request is going to be within the first week or two of the session, uh, so that that capital outlay bill can be drawn up and, and put before committees. So it, it goes really quickly, and so we're going to want to have some, um, funding commitments made uh, in, prior to the end of the year. Um, and with that, I'm going to stand for any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Court. Uh, commissioners, any questions or motions? Uh, Madam Vice Chair, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Director Court, uh, thank you Kathy Court for always, um, bringing all the goods. I, um, I have a small amendment to make to one of my district priorities. Um, just on number one, under District Three priorities, I just want to amend it to remove the words "and" to renovate a former clinic, so.
Okay, so, so Madam Vice Chair, I'm going to stop you right there, since this is final reading, um, and we're not just introducing, I think we need to get a motion on the floor for the underlying, um, resolution, and then we can take a motion for amendment, so.
So, I, thank you, I was going, I move to approve.
Second? And then?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I am, um, and so I would like to suggest, uh, I would like to request an amendment, line twenty-nine, to remove the words "and" to renovate a former clinic. And just for my colleagues to understand that this is, yes, um, been working with, um, East Central Ministries and others, and we're trying to really build housing in the International District, and that was a former clinic that, I just don't want that language as appropriations, as we've learned from our wonderful Kathy Court, that oftentimes the, that language can be too binding. So this allows us to still, um, ask for the funding for furnishing, um, not include the language of a clinic, and talk about for, affordable and transitional housing.
I'll second the motion, and if I may just restate it briefly, item twenty-nine on page, uh, what is this, four? It would be striking the words "and" to renovate a former clinic.
Correct.
Commissioners, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, signal in the affirmative? Yes? Any opposed? Amendment's adopted.
Thank you. And otherwise, they do not have any other questions.
Okay, great. Commissioner Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have, uh, handed out to all of you a, uh, amendment, a floor amendment that I'm proposing tonight that, um, actually I don't think changes what the intent of our original resolution is. It, it simply makes it relevant in the fact that we will be having a special session. As we all know, the governor has made an announcement to call a special session in October, and so I have a redlined version for you to look at, and, and I'd like to read it in as a motion now for an amendment, floor amendment. So on the first page, lines seven through twenty, we add, uh, a few whereas statements. Um, and for my colleagues, I, uh, I passed this through our county manager and, and our county attorney and our lobbyist, so that this is the source of this, and, um, I'll read that now. Whereas Governor Lujan Grisham has announced intent to issue a proclamation calling for a special legislative session the first week of October 2025, and has declared that the subjects of the proclamation will include issues primarily related to health care, hunger, including food insecurity, and addressing federal funding reductions that affect programs related to health care, hunger, food insecurity, that impact the health and well-being of New Mexicans. And then on line fourteen, whereas Burnleal County currently sponsors and supports several health care programs and food-related services, and recognizes the critical need for improvements, enhancements, and funding for infrastructure and programs related to health care, hunger, and food insecurity. And then on line nineteen, whereas the Burnleal County Board of Commissioners has identified the following county and district-specific priorities, and then it goes back to what was, um, originally introduced. With the, uh, final, uh, amendment on the signature page, the second to last page of your document, starting on line six, be it further resolved, the Burnleal County Commission supports state and local efforts to more adequately fund infrastructure, services, and programs related to health care, hunger, food insecurity for all residents of the county and the state of New Mexico, and furthermore directs county advocacy efforts with the state legislature to regular or special session to effectuate such capital infrastructure improvements, programmatic support, and funding for health care, hunger, and food insecurity. And so I, I make that motion, but, and it's a mouthful, but really what it is, um, I am proposing here is to be relevant with this upcoming special session and allowing our lobbyists to advocate for what is going to be on the call by the governor that relates back to many of our priorities that are already in this priority, uh, uh, resolution and the services that we currently provide.
I'll second the motion, and we'll, uh, open up the floor for any discussion. And I would also point out, in addition to Ms. Court, uh, one of our lobbyists, Mr. Dan Weeks, is here as well, if there's any questions, uh, on this or, or the underlying resolution. All right, seeing no discussion on the proposed amendment, all those in favor, signal in the affirmative? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? That passes on a five-zero vote, and the amendment's adopted. So we are, uh, on the resolution as amended. Commissioner Frank Baca.
Right, I have one slight amendment and, and, uh, but first of all, I'd just like to say that, and I've said this, I think, the last meeting, over a period of the last couple of months, that we've had, uh, discussion about, I certainly appreciate the staff's engagement with me to help me to understand the projects and the process. I'm still not a hundred percent there, but I appreciate your patience and, uh, your work with me to, to do that. And as I've said at the last meeting, um, that the, the drainage issue in the South Valley are, are just a priority for me. Uh, and I'm making that point as much as I can to our legislative delegation. We have an amazing delegation in that area, South Valley, and, um, and so I will be continuing to talk to them and urging them to, to, um, to help us, uh, assault, uh, address these problems. Uh, one issue that we had come up in the process, and I know I talked to Public Works, I have about it, and I said, I think I spoke to you, Miss, about it, Miss Court, is just, uh, and it was somewhat, somewhat, you know, we had a couple of public meetings on this and a little bit, uh, different, uh, opinions on that, but under District Two priorities under, um, item number six, Tapia Road. And I know there are some engineering issues, uh, related, and drainage issues related to the area that has chosen, and I had just asked that that be increased to a short distance. I'm not sure what the right wording is, just to say, and, an area south of Roberson. And I do that for every specific reason because there's, um, I believe, a legislator that's very interested in, in, in increasing that project, understanding that it is, you know, involves some additional engineering because there's already been some drainage work done. And, and in spite of that, and I also understand that this is a large project, ultimately looking at fifteen million dollars, probably at today's dollars, and who knows how much in tomorrow's dollars. So I would ask that be added, and as, and I move that it be added, uh, after the words on number six, Tapia Road from San Ignacio to an area south of Robert, Roberson. I don't know if that's, probably better ways to describe that. And, um, so I would make that, that, uh, that, uh, motion to make that one addition.
I'll second the motion, uh, and I'll clarify one more time on line, uh, page three, line forty-four, and this is on the, the amended version of the resolution. Add the words, uh, in Tapia Road from San Ignacio to an area south of Robertson, Roberson. All right. Commissioners, any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal in the affirmative? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The amendment's adopted five to zero. Uh, yes, Commissioner Baca.
I, I just have one more question, and, and this is just truly a, a question, uh, about the process. And so I was given this really nice pamphlet and book, um, that, uh, has tabs and, and, you know, highlights some of the projects, but it doesn't include all the projects, and I could see at least some District Two. I didn't check the other, uh, districts to tell you the truth, but there's like five or six projects, um, that are identified in this. And, and my list, of course, I have thirteen, uh, projects. And I didn't see that all thirteen of those are included in this book, and maybe I'm just missing something, or, or maybe my copy was wrong, but I have six pages of mine.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners and, uh, Commissioner Frank Baca, what you're looking at is, I, and I wanted to provide that to you as an example of what we do every legislative session. So that was the booklet that was created for the 2025 legislative session.
Oh, gotcha.
Um, and so now that you've approved this re, or once you approve this resolution, we'll use this current resolution to update the booklet with all your priorities, and only those priorities on this resolution will be in that booklet and will be advanced to the Legislative Council Service website for actual funding.
Gotcha, thank you so much.
And I'll just add one other thing, that, um, we will also be, uh, creating a, a shorter version of that um, so that you'll both be able to give all of the legislators that you speak with, as we will, that more robust document, but also kind of a cheat sheet, that, that, so when you're meeting with people, you'll, you won't have to carry around twenty of those.
Thank you so much.
Any other commissioners with thoughts or amendments? Okay. Um, I just wanted to say that, uh, I appreciate all the work of the, the staff, everybody that's been involved in, and this is very cross-disciplinary because we've got public safety, we've got community centers and parks and roads. So there's, there's a lot that goes into this. I think every year, this gets a little bit better, in my opinion, and so I think we're, we're moving that direction. And I appreciate all the changes that were incorporated from the input and, uh, direction that we gave last time. So, you know, for example, on animal care, condensing that, uh, condensing some of the road projects, but, but giving that, uh, detailed information that I think legislators, uh, will like to, to see, to see where their funding will go directly and, and, you know, what can, what they can tell their constituents they've funded, so. With that, that's all I have to say, I appreciate it. All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, signal in the affirmative? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, that passes on a five-zero vote. Thank you, Ms. Court. All right, uh, final adoption tonight is going to be item B, Planning and Development Services of Property Nuisance Abatement, uh, for an unplatted tract on Pajarito Mesa, and we have Director Nicholas Ham to present.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Nicholas Ham, Director of Planning and Development Services, here presenting item nine B. Uh, this is a nuisance abatement case that was on the, uh, commission's consent agenda the last time you all convened a public hearing. Uh, the property in question is located on Pajarito Mesa. It is a five-acre piece of property. Um, the county is pursuing enforcement on this property for, uh, accumulation of materials, uh, auto parts, vehicles in various states of repair, and accumulation of trash and junk. Uh, I'm going to go through some pictures with you, just very briefly. Uh, the first picture is a copy of the county's posting of tonight's proceeding. Uh, since the, the county does not have access to this property, um, we posted this at the property perimeter on a stake in a manner that's visible. Uh, that's consistent with the requirements of the county's nuisance abatement ordinance. As you can see, this is the property condition. These pictures were taken on September second. Uh, so first, the county started with conventional enforcement efforts. That began in the early part of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, the county tried to take this forward as a conventional zoning case through the Metropolitan Court process. The property owner in question is unavailable. Um, he is, uh, in the correctional system in Otero County. Um, and we've provided notice to both his property owner, address of record in Albuquerque, and we've also provided notice of all of the county's actions to the address that we have for him in Otero County. More on the property itself, the subject property is not subdivided, it lacks legal access. Uh, you must trespass on private property to reach it. Uh, further research by the planning staff indicates that property taxes have been delinquent since two thousand and nineteen. Uh, during the conventional zoning case, six notices of violation were sent to the property owner of record prior to the county taking further action, meaning that it was before we filed a criminal complaint with the county's legal department. On the filing of the criminal complaint in the conventional zoning case, the judge dismissed the case for, not the merits of the case, but the inability of the property owner to appear for the proceeding. Uh, in other words, the county was not able to seek relief through the court system because the property owner of record was unable to be approved for transport to Burnleal County, uh, to, to be at the venue for the prosecution of the zoning case. Um, I, I won't go into the details of, of the property owner's offenses to get them where they were, just to say that they are serving a significant term, and that may have influenced the reason that the, um, officials in Otero County felt not compelled to transport this person here. Um, I'll defer to Mr. Martinez on the specifics of that, but I, what I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make here is that the planning department made significant efforts to prosecute this and resolve this really through the conventional means before we escalated to the nuisance abatement process. Uh, seeing as that we were not able to achieve resolution through the court process, this case was referred to the Nuisance Abatement Office in the early part of two thousand twenty-five. The nuisance abatement staff verified the property condition to be in violation of the provisions of that ordinance. Uh, it was referred to the Nuisance Abatement Officer for a hearing in May of two thousand twenty-five. Uh, at that hearing, it was determined by the Nuisance Abatement Hearing Officer, based upon evidence in the record, uh, that the property condition constituted a nuisance, and her ruling was to move this forward to the Board of County Commissioners with a resolution for your all's consideration. The family of the property owner of record has been engaged with county staff throughout this process. We do not, the county does not possess evidence indicating that anyone other than, um, the property owner in the county's records, James Heinz III, um, has control over the property. The hearing officer that handles these requests went so far as to go into recess during her staff proceeding to give the family an opportunity to produce that document. They were unable to do so at the hearing. After the hearing, I provided my personal contact information, offered any time to be able to accept that document. I did the same thing after the last hearing in front of the Board of County Commissioners. I again asked them tonight if they were able to produce that document, and I, as of yet, I am not in possession of that. All of that to say, um, the person that is ultimately responsible with this property is unable or unwilling to remedy the issues. Um, and the county has made significant efforts to work with the family, making representations that they have control over the property to produce evidence, allowing them to take control over the property. Some of that is germane, some of it is not. The reason that the county is in front of, that the department is in front of you tonight is because of the property condition, and that is irrespective of the ownership situation and anyone indicating that they may or may not have control over the property. With all of that, I'll stand for questions. The county has exhausted all of its due process requirements, um, and we have made significant efforts to work with individuals either occupying or indicating that they have a desire to control the property to bring the property into compliance. Uh, with that, Commissioners, I'll stand for questions and urge your support.
Thank you very much, Director Ham. Uh, Commissioners, do we have any questions or a motion? Yes, Commissioner Frank Baca?
If, if I may, I have questions of Mr. Ham. Um, Nicholas Ham, um, and thank you, uh, for your presentation, and, um, you know, we have some, item was on our, our agenda last meeting, as Congressman. uh, item was on our agenda last meeting, and since then I requested it to be deferred to this meeting and to be, um, the, uh, adoption of resolution, I guess, portion of our agenda is so we could have everybody an opportunity to be heard and be sa- uh, say what they have to say. Uh, just a couple of questions. Uh, so what I hear in your saying, as of today, uh, September ninth at six fifty-three PM, you still have not seen or have in your possession a copy of any power of attorney that give anybody else a lawful authority to, uh, to, uh, resolve matters concerning this piece of property, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Frank Baca, that is correct.
Also, what I, what I understand from, uh, briefing and your, your presentation, that there's no one that, that resides on this property, no person that actually lives there, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Frank Baca, the county has no knowledge of anyone calling this property a place that they dwell. Uh, so in, in this action, we will not be displacing individuals from, uh, a dwelling or residence.
And it also, uh, this is not an action to take ownership of the property, is it?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Frank Baca, the county's action tonight is focused on removal of the nuisance conditions. And if the county is approved to move forward with, with that action, the staff has an obligation to file a lien in the amount of funds, taxpayer funds that are spent to remedy those conditions. A lien in the state of Mexico could be foreclosed on through a separate court proceeding, uh, but that is not the request before you this evening specifically.
Um, and assuming this, uh, resolution is adopted and approved by the commission, um, would the individuals that you have been, uh, dealing with, who I understand are relatives of the, uh, record owner, uh, would they still be authorized or allowed to, uh, themselves remove the items that, uh, you have identified as being, uh, constitute the nuisance?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Frank Baca, at any time before the county is compelled to take action, if we are indeed compelled to take action, the nuisance conditions are removed, all of the county's efforts to undertake that on its own will no longer be necessary.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Barbo.
Um, thank you. I, I just wanted to ask if you could remind us, what are the requirements that would make this space whole? If that makes sense?
Mr. Chair.
Like, what is the new, what would they, what would it have to look like? I, I see the picture, what would it, what would need to change?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Barboa, this property is Zoned A1, that's a rural agricultural zone. It allows for rural agriculture activities incidental to dwelling on a property. One of the challenges with this property is that it doesn't have access established, meaning that the county is unable to issue permits for construction or development because we are unable, we are also unable to provide emergency services through unestablished means of ingress and egress. And that determination is made by county public works and county public safety agencies. Um, with regard to this condition of the property as you see it before you, removal of the items that have been identified in the, both the resolution and the notice of decision provided by the hearing officer, in layman's terms, they need to remove the vehicles and the trash and the junk that's on the property and return it to what the department and the ordinance calls a rake clean finish. Um, we wouldn't, if, if they were to keep animals on the property, as they've stated in some of their testimony before both the hearing officer and the board, I wouldn't be standing before you this evening, uh, particularly if ha- keeping those animals met the requirements of the county's animal control requirement or animal care requirements. Uh, this really is mostly about the harborage of materials, trash and junk, and the amount of vehicles in various states of repair being stored on this property. This would be a violation in a commercial zone. It would even be a violation in the C-two zone because to store vehicles like this, you need site improvements related to paving and screening, um, that are required to be able to maintain vehicles of this type in a way that doesn't harm the environment.
Thank you for that.
So, sir, I see you raising your hand here. This, I'm sorry, but this is not a, a back and forth discussion. There, there's always that opportunity, as, as Director Ham said, to work with his staff and, and have that back and forth. Um, Director Ham, could you, could you walk us through, um, next steps? Um, and is there any ability for an appeal? Although I would, I would think that that may be complicated by the fact that the owner, um, is not available. So, can you walk us through that, please?
Yes, indeed. Uh, Mr. Chair, so I'm going to paint a scenario for approval, because in the scenario of denial, that's the end of this, and the county takes no further action. In a scenario where the board upholds the recommendation of the hearing officer and moves this resolution forward for approval, the staff will then move into the, um, request for bid process to solicit a contractor that meets the county's requirements to undertake the abatement process. Um, before that even occurs, there is an opportunity for, um, appeals to the district court system. And the courts can make the determination about whether or not an individual has standing to make a claim of that nature, and I'm probably getting into Mr. Martinez's sandbox by talking about some of this, but the requirements of the ordinance allow for an opportunity for someone to appeal the county's actions to district court. After that, the, the county will just undertake the steps to make sure that the property meets the, is returned to a condition meeting the requirements of our ordinances, and will tally up the cost of doing so and file a lien proportionate to that amount in the clerk's records.
Thank you, Director Ham. So, uh, for, for the parties here tonight that are, that are interested in this, you know, what I'm hearing, and again, I'm, I'm sort of regurgitating what was, you know, what was just said, but I think there's many, several options here available to the, to the interested parties where, you know, you all, if we approve this, of course, uh, you all are able to clean this up yourselves, um, and avoid any further action or involvement by the county. Uh, the director said that, you know, uh, keeping some animals there, uh, would, would likely not engage in, in further, uh, activity from the county. Or you can appeal this decision if it's approved to district court, um, where standing would or would not be approved, or, um, the county may go forward with, with taking this action to, to clean up the items here that are, uh, considered in violation. So, you know, I just want to be very, try to be as clear as possible with what the options are. Um, and I know that in having seen many of these cases come forward, that the director and his staff are always willing to work with people who are willing to work with them. So if, if there's progress happening, if there's movement to, to improve the conditions, um, I, you know, I trust that, that they're willing to, to do that. Commissioner Frank Baca.
I'll thank Mr. Chair for another option to make a couple of comments. There's number one is that I would just like to say that I can't, you know, after forty year plus career as a attorney, I can't help myself by saying this, but, but for the, the record, uh, although there's not an option at this point, because there was a full hearing below, that there was opportunity through public comments from Mr. Heinz's father to, to state, but they want to state, which is part of my intention in, in deferring this to this meeting, to have them, um, be able to say what they want to say to, to us directly. The other thing I want to say, um, in general, is that I actually have a lot of interest and concern for what's going on at Pajerito Mesa. I get a, a monthly briefing from staff. I've been out there more than twice, uh, several times actually to drive around and just to see, and I have, um, some, um, suggestions, some ideas that we're working on, some theories, some plans to maybe, uh, do some things that might help, um, to improve the conditions of people in Pajerito Mesa. We had a public meeting, uh, I think it was a week ago, two weeks ago recently, I, I know, and we had forty-three individuals there, forty-three adults, you know, because of the outreach that we did to Pajerito Mesa residents. And, um, and so we're working. We have some ideas that we're going to be presenting to this commission here in the months ahead because I think it's an area that deserves attention. I think it's an area that had a history of, of neglect, uh, through no fault of anybody in this room. Um, and it just happened over a period of thirty-five years or longer that this has come to where it's at. And, and so we do have a, a, a plan, an idea that if, if it, if it falls through, it's not going to be next week, next month, probably not even next year, but it's, it's an idea, it's a plan to, to help address some of the issues people have in regards to being able to improve their homes and improve their lives, because mostly what we have out there are good, working people that simply, uh, want to get to work and want to get their kids to school and need access to emergency services. And so we, you know, we, we have some ideas about that. But one thing I wanted to make a statement about is that, um, at that meeting, and again, at this particular case as well, I, as well, I think applies to, it is just absolutely important for an individual, as a citizen, as a good neighbor, to maintain their property in good, in good order and clean. That is just part of being a, a, a community, uh, person or resident of Burnaleo County. We have the rules, we have the regulations in place because it affects not just you, it affects everybody else in your community. Uh, I grew up in the South Valley, and I, you know, I may, I, I lay claim to knowing as much about that community as anybody else walking the surface, only because of my age. Um, and so I, I say that with the understanding of how people in science feel about, you know, their property and their property rights, but it is, does affect other people, and your property is not kept up and not clean in lots of different ways. So, um, I just, uh, I, I, I do support these efforts, um, and, and because of that, I will move approval of the, of the resolution.
I'll second. Uh, Commissioners, any further discussion or comment? Uh, nope, Commissioner Benson, okay. Um, all right, seeing no further discussion. Actually, I have one thing that I want to say, really not on this topic, but one thing in this case that concerns me is the lack of access to the property. And I don't think that's actually through any fault of the owner, the owner's family. Um, you know, my understanding is that a lot of these lots on the mesa have been sold over the years without proper plating actions and proper easements. And what really strikes me is, it looks like they're fairly new. When you drive out there, there's these big green signs with our county logo on it that says, warning people basically to not buy property out there or to, to be, uh, careful when they proceed with, with a property transaction in that area. And I assume, I haven't really, you know, it's not my district, I haven't dug into it too much, but I assume that's probably because of issues like this where there are properties that don't have easements, they don't have right of way for access. Somebody goes out there, buys it, thinks they're going to build their dream home, uh, and for good reason, the county comes in and says, we, we can't allow you to do that here because we don't have access to provide emergency services if there's a fire, if there's, uh, you know, a, a, a public safety issue of any kind. And so I, I sympathize very much with, with you and your family with that issue. I'm, I'm, again, I'm, I'm sorry, we're not, not discussing back and forth, but I, I think that's a real challenge for, for you all, but for the whole area, from my understanding, is those kinds of, of really what were deceptive sales practices that had nothing to do with you guys, um, a- and, and have led to this problem. And so I hope that through Commissioner Baca's leadership, you know, maybe we can make some progress to, again, probably can't promise the world, but, but I think something that is very concerning to me in this case really highlights that. Um, but it sounds like the department's still willing to work with you all if, if there's a, a happy medium there. So I would encourage you all to just stay in touch with the staff, so. With that, uh, we'll close the floor if there's nothing else. And, uh, all those in favor, signal in the affirmative?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? That passes on a five zero vote. Thank you, Director Ham. All right, next up, we have, uh, item ten, introductions of resolutions. All of our resolutions require two hearings before final approval, except in the cases of special exceptions, uh, and planning and zoning matters. The first hearing will serve as the resolution's introduction. The public is encouraged to review the introduced resolutions and sign up to ask questions or provide public comments. The following items will be returned at a subsequent meeting for final adoption consideration. And so the first item is item ten A, sponsored by our Vice Chair, uh, Barbola, and this is the introduction of the East Central Ministries Affordable Housing Grant Application. Director Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, back again. Um, so this is, um, using our, again, our new affordable housing grant assistance process that allows for the county to engage with more affordable housing development projects. And this case, it's with East Central Ministries. Once again, this will be for the one thirty-three Virginia street prod- uh, street, uh, building that was the former clinic. Uh, we would be conveying the property over to them to then have East Central Ministries redevelop that property to be able to be for transitional housing and house about six individuals on the site. Um, the county, um, has been working over the past few years to be able to move that piece over to them, and now we have this process, and East Central Ministries has been working over the past few years as well to do capital outlay funds to be able to, uh, be able to make this action happen. Um, and as Mr. Valdez, uh, had alerted, excuse me, something on my eye, earlier that, uh, there, um, uh, were awarded the capital outlay through the MFA, so we'll be able to move that piece forward. Their sources and uses are using the capital outlay for the construction and the development of, uh, being able to make that, uh, switch from a dental clinic to a, um, transitional, a living place. Um, just a quick map of the area on Vir- Virginia Street here in the International District. And then just to take us through the, uh, process of where we are now, if you think this is a map at the mall, here you are. So here we are, is an intro right here, uh, we were, uh, for the, um, the resolution to be able to convey the property over. We actually just found out right before the meeting that Housing New Mexico approved the application. So that means we'll be coming back at the next meeting for final approval of this conveyance, and then we'll probably most likely go to the State Board of, uh, Finance at the October meeting, and then move into a grant agreement piece, and then move into a compliance piece of just monitoring the property that East Central Ministries is actually moving, uh, the project over into transitional housing, and that it's happening over the next three years. And so we'll continue to monitor that through the Economic Development Department. So once again, a pre-approved tonight is the, um, initial introduction of the resolution, and we'll be back at the next meeting.
Thank you, Director.
I'll stand for questions.
Go to the sponsor, the Vice Chair first.
Thank you, um, Chair. Thank you, Director Gonzalez, again. I, um, am very excited about this, and I want to send thanks to all the folks who've worked on making this happen, all Carolyn and Marcos at our Economic Development, but also East Central Ministries, a number of community members that are invested in that project, and of course, all the staff, the procurement, all the things that have taken to get us here. Just want to share great appreciation to our county manager. I, um, and I, a little bit of just tiny history, right? This property, Dr. Kaufman, who is a renowned doctor in, uh, University of New Mexico Hospital, had originally got this property, and they were running a dental clinic out of this, um, and that became a really hub for community. It's sort of, East Central Ministries is located sort of their, their bigger warehouse that they have, um, meet, it could be meetings in and grow plants and give due food distribution is, um, right behind the dental, the once dental clinic, and it's really about this community that, um, supports the folks in those neighborhoods, many that are unsheltered or unhoused, folks that didn't have access to dental care. They've all become a part of this, um, larger community. So I'm excited about what this can look for. There was no longer, the dental services have been moved, so they're not, we're not taking them away. They've been moved to another location nearby, um, and this is a perfect resolution to this building that would have probably just remained empty for a long time, or maybe even been blighted because it's in a neighborhood where, um, yeah, so I'm, I'm really excited about this opportunity and thankful, and I ask for my, I move for approval and ask for my colleagues to vote with me.
Second. Commissioners, further discussion? Uh, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gonzalez, I was asking you this earlier, and I, I believe you said the, the value of the property is currently about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Benson, uh, according to our real estate group, the value is roughly about a hundred and sixty-five thousand eight fifty.
Thank you.
Uh, that's just using a market estimates, but we haven't done an appraisal on it.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, uh, again, how many, um, so a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar, uh, donation, how many, uh, homes will this cr- help create?
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Benson, it was estimated to hold about six residents, including one manager.
Thank you. So, um, that's, well, I just wanted to, uh, clarify that for, we're getting about six homes out of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, I think that's a good deal for us. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Commissioner. We'll go back to Vice Chair Barbo.
Thank you, and I thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, and I thank you, Commissioner Benson, also for the question. I just want to make sure this, as I understand, and we do have folks in the audience if needed, is going to be used for transitional living. So folks won't own the homes or properties, but, and that six may rotate, so it may be 36 within a year that stay there, or that six may stay there for a longer time. But the whole point is to get people housed and in a safe living environment. So, yeah, I just want to make sure that was understood.
May I just add?
Yes, County Manager.
Thank you, and I apologize that I didn't realize that the MFA had taken that action. My question is up for you, Marcos, not to put you on the spot, but would there be, are we holding the process up because of the double, this being the introduction? Or is there enough activity happening that this still lines up with us allowing this transition to occur?
Mr. Chair and Madam Manager, this, we would have needed to already be on the State Board of Finance's schedule for the September meeting, which is happening next week, so we have enough runway time to get on their October meeting. So we'll get with Ben, the State Board of Finance, and we have a good enough relationship to have them understand that the approval's coming at the end of September.
Because there are no objections. And Commissioner, the reason I was asking is that we have been really rigorous. In fact, two of the items you heard tonight were trying for us to do a better job of constraining the timeline for any of these developments so that we're not contributing to the increased cost for development. But that's great. And in the future, one thing that I'll make sure is that we give you a more, one, I wanted to say how much I appreciate the staff giving you the timeline, but making sure that we're not the reason somebody is behind, so we'll be more aggressive about asking for single readings when it's appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add a couple of things on this, and I think, you know, we are not, I don't believe our rules would constrain us at this point from moving immediate action if we wanted to, if there was a desire to. I don't know that that is warranted, but, you know, leave it up to the sponsor if she wants to do that. I think we absolutely could. And Manager's nodding, so we can address that. I'm going to finish my comments and then we can address that if we want to. I just wanted to say, first of all, to the staff, to Director Gonzalez and Carolyn, the briefing that the Vice Chair and I had on this, really appreciated that, thought we had some really thoughtful discussion, not only about this project, this partner, this property, but about the whole affordable housing process and the rules and the anti-donation clause and all these things that play into this. And I really appreciate the innovative thinking, where we're really trying to try new things. And so that's one thing that makes me very excited about this particular partner in East Central Ministries is trying something different, right? Trying a new approach here. Our housing strategy, quite frankly, as a community, has failed over the last 20, 30 years. And so we're trying to, you know, pick up the pieces and change things up. And so really, really appreciate the innovative approach here and trying to do something different and new. If you Google this property, it's the easiest way to see it, right? There are several encampments in front of it. And I drove by there the other day and there was an encampment in front of it then. And so that picture is not inaccurate. And so not only the value of the homes that will be created there, the beds, but the value to the neighborhood of simply not having what's currently there, which is a blighted, vacant property where people are camping out front. I'm sure there are police, fire, ACS services going there, if not daily, weekly, to provide some level of service to the people that are camped in front of there. So just on that alone, I think this is highly valuable for what it'll do, hopefully for that neighborhood. And so really support this, commend the Vice Chair for always working for her district and trying to find these solutions, find these partners that are willing to invest in the ID and, you know, other areas that really need that investment. So with that, Vice Chair, I don't know if you want to change anything about the motion, but we could entertain that.
Yes, I would like to ask for a, what's it called?
Suspension of the rules.
Suspension of the rules, so that we can have a single vote on this.
Okay. So I would second the motion for immediate action. We'll vote on immediate action and then we'll vote on the actual motions. So any discussion on immediate action? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal in the affirmative. Yes?
Yes.
And none opposed, so that passes on a five zero vote for immediate action tonight. And so with that, I believe we need to issue a resolution number, if we could. Madam Clerk.
Yes, so that, and this is item 10A, would become AR 2025-91.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
And now, do you want to make another motion?
A motion to move item, that number that was just said, tonight. I ask for a second.
I'll second that. And so sometimes government can move kind of fast, right? Just change it up on the fly, right? Let's go. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal in the affirmative. Yes?
Yes.
None opposed, that passes on a five zero vote. Thank you, Director. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair. All right, up next, item B, our opioid funding, budget, and appropriation. We have Senior Fiscal Analyst Audrey Garcia to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, and Madam County Manager. My name is Audrey Garcia, Senior Fiscal Financial Analyst for the Finance Division. Finance is requesting approval for the introduction of a financial resolution accepting and budgeting payments totaling $902,006.21 from the opioid settlement. On May 22, 2025, Burnolio County was notified by the Directing Administrator of the National Opioid Settlements that on or around July 15, 2025, the county would receive its fifth year distribution from BG Distributors. On behalf of the distributors Cardinal and AmerisourceBergen in the amount of $571,302.39. On June 25, 2025, Burnolio County was notified by the Directing Administrator of the National Opioid Settlements that on or around July 16, 2025, the county would receive its third distribution from BG Distributors from Allergan and Teva in the amount of $330,703.82. The county received payments from all three of the distributors on 8/8/2025 for a total The county has received a total of $25,517,956.14 of settlement payments as of 8/8/2025. The initial settlement amounts from the distributor sources at that time was $65,765,145.52 to be distributed from 2022 to 2038. We received settlements from other settlements totaling $837,897.86, which were not part of the $65 million. If the introduction is approved, Finance will submit for final approval of the financial resolution at the September 23, 2025 BCC Administrative Meeting. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garcia. Commissioners? Anyone want to make a motion?
No, but approval of introduction.
All right, approval from Commissioner Barbara Baca and a second from the Vice Chair. Any discussion?
Just thank you for the work and for the transparency around this. It's all public record, very understandable, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And kind of a question for leadership, Dr. Lindstrom, County Manager. My understanding, belief based on past conversations, is that we should be seeing some additional items coming forward over the next few months on this because while we did pass the opioid settlement plan jointly with the city and are beginning to administer parts of that, there was still some remaining funding that was not committed by this commission. And I just kind of wanted to use this as an opportunity to check in on when we might expect to have further conversations about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. We are currently getting scheduled with the LGCC, the City Council, and with this commission to provide you with updates relative to where we are with the guidance that came out of the three respective governmental entities. And then we will also be further proposing with the balance of the funds what might be potential relative to some of the work that we did going back to the Subcommittee and the LGCC.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to say two things. One, how much I appreciate Dr. Lindstrom's continued efforts to continue to collaborate with the city of Albuquerque. I will say that as we get ready for budget, my objective would be to try to bring some more direct action prior to the new year, the new calendar year. And there are two issues that are kind of weighing on my mind as it relates to how we proceed. One is that where we have opportunities now to be able to make some strategic investments, I want to make sure we do that in as timely a fashion as we can. I think that's particularly important before we go into this next legislative session, if we can help it, to make sure people understand we're rolling. And the second thing I would just say is that we are working diligently to come up with a much more clear communication method so that we can disaggregate budgeting and the confusion around actives and that with the actual investments and the outcomes that we're having. And so I've just, again, I want to say how much I appreciate Dr. Lindstrom and the entire team because everybody's thinking that way. But my objective will be to bring actions to you as quickly as we can prior to the end of the calendar year.
Thank you both. I think that addresses my question, and you raised a very good point that we probably need to very clearly communicate with the public, that this action right now is really kind of a financial transaction, action. We are budgeting the money, basically bringing it into our ledger, putting it where it's going to lie, but we're not actually committing it at this point to a particular program or piece of infrastructure or something like that. And that was what I was asking about, was when are we going to actually make some of those commitments? And your team is actively working on that to bring that to us before the end of the year, which I think is a good move, so appreciate that. Commissioners, anything further? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, signal in the affirmative. Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you. Item C, Parks and Recreation and Open Space Budgeting the Land Sale Proceeds for 151510 Manol Boulevard Northwest. Mr. Barney to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is John Barney, Planning Manager for Parks, Recreation, and Open Space. I'm going to try to find my file here. Oh, good, there we go. So I'm before you today to do the initial introduction of a resolution to budget the proceeds from the sale of 151510 Manol Boulevard to the Indian Public Cultural Center by Burnolio County. So this sale actually took place back in, was approved by the commission in January and was, the closing happened in March of 2025. And so this is basically budgeting the funds to, in order for us to put them to use. And we're going to, there's two ways that's going to happen. One is we're going to be leasing the current facilities there back temporarily before we get the new facilities for 4H and extension constructed. So, and a portion of the funding will actually go to the construction of the 4H building and to the hiring of planning and design consultants for the whole campus. So we're very excited. This is, with this funding, we can actually get started on that process, or I should say, get started on the next leg of that process. We've had, we've worked through a strategic plan with the extension and with 4H. We're going to be meeting with the 4H folks in November. We have a community meeting for Sandy Ranch, which is the location for these future facilities next week, actually, on Tuesday evening, as Commissioner Baca knows. And we're, yeah, we're very excited to get this process going and sort of bring into the future what the new extension and 4H facilities will look like. So specifically, what we're asking for this evening is just, again, we're introducing this resolution, we're requesting the board's approval to budget $2,407,398 net proceeds from the sale of 1500 to 1510 Manol Boulevard Northwest into two designated project accounts. $711,795, which will go into a project to pay the lease payments back to the IPCC. And then $1,695,603 will go to a capital project specifically to develop the new 4H and extension buildings. So in our next steps, like I've already mentioned, we'll be having a couple of public meetings and we'll be kicking off this, will be a very robust set of community conversations over the next probably two years, when you take into account the extension building, along with 4H. 4H we're going to try to make happen within that two-year timeframe, but it will take a bigger lift financially for the extension building, so you will be appearing before you, I'm sure, with an ask. And of course, it is our number one priority for District One for capital outlay this round. And so hopefully that funding will help us get there. So anyway, that's kind of where we're at. We're, yeah, approval of this action basically ensures compliance with our requirements to, you know, host 4H and extension and give them a location to operate from, which, as you've heard earlier this evening, they're woven inextricably through a lot of our ag programming, so it's something, it's not just an obligation, it's something we really want to do, but it's an extension, literally, of what we do as a county from, in the agricultural domain, and we're increasingly doing it in the urban area. So with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barney. We'll go to Commissioner Baca first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, John. Really appreciate your work on this. I wanted to just, because you were speaking quickly, the amount divided between the lease back is $700,000 for the lease?
That's correct.
And so the amount that's going to the, what's the amount for the actual capital improvements to Sandy Ranch and planning?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Baca, so it will be, it'll be $1,695,003, I guess. And again, if we are able to get the 4H building, for example, built sooner, then that money would revert to, over to the capital project. We'll move that over to the capital project. So this is, this is just so we have that funding already budgeted. Originally, when we were talking about doing the sale, the discussions with us in real estate, they were actually going to leave that in escrow, and we were going to just have that available to pay a lease, but it didn't work out. It was going to cost the county extra money to do that, so this is kind of the process that we agreed to, to bring it into and have two separate projects to deal with it.
Thank you, just to follow up, Mr. Chair. I think that's very important, and that's a good thing, because we want to retain that one point, almost 1.7 million to move forward on, you know, bringing this to fruition out there at the Sandy Ranch. I thanked Mr. Garish earlier about his patience and partnership, and we have had that in the community, and so we're running. So this is great. So thank you very much.
Do you want to make a motion?
Oh, yes, I'm moving approval.
Second. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, signal in the affirmative. Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barney. And our last item this evening, Technical Services, to present on the NMDOT Cooperative Agreement for Funding and Install of a DC Fast Charger here at the Alvarado Square Building. Director Brian Lopez to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Madam County Manager. I'm Brian Lopez, Director of Technical Services, and today I'm presenting a request to introduce a financial resolution for a new DC fast-charging EV station here at Alvarado Square. We've been awarded a $500,000 five hundred thousand dollar grant from the DOT for this project. Uh, the total project cost is approximately six hundred and seven thousand dollars, uh, with the local match, which is, uh, fifty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars in county bonds. And then, there will be a fifty thousand dollar, uh, PNM rebate. This will be the only DC fast charge station in downtown Albuquerque, uh, supporting both the public and county sustainability goals. Uh, the county already operates four Level Two charging stations, including here at Alvarado Square. And we also operate a fleet charging, uh, we also operate fleet charging at twenty-four-hundred Broadway and Los Vecinos Community Center. Uh, while there are three hundred charging stations in the metro area, only a handful are DC fast charge. And this project will help, uh, fill a key gap in that network. Currently, our project schedule and, uh, operations and maintenance related to this item, uh, construction pla, if, when approved, uh, construction plans will be submitted to the city for permitting, uh, in the fall of two thousand twenty-five. Um, we already have an agreement in place with the city for chargers in the right-of-way along Fourth Street where this would be located. Um, the equipment orders will begin immediately once the PO is issued, um, as there are very long lead times for the equipment. Um, and one thing to note is the station must be installed and activated by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six, per the, uh, language within the agreement. And that, we do charge, uh, a fee for any users of the, our charging stations to help, uh, recover electricity costs. And the equipment will be covered by a five-year warranty, uh, from ChargePoint. So, in closing, uh, this is a grant-funded project, uh, with limited local match. Uh, it creates the first downtown fast-charging station, and it, uh, advances our sustainability and transportation goals. Uh, so with that, I request your support for introducing this financial resolution. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Director. Uh, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Commissioners, any questions, discussion?
Mr. Chair.
County Manager, or Commissioner Benson, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, um, I talked to, um, Brian earlier. Thank you for the follow-up information as well. But the, um, the cost, I think, is, um, crazy. It's six hundred thousand for one charging station. Um, the fact that it's not our money helps, um, that this is DOT. And I know, I know that it's a, a grant that we, uh, that they've earmarked for this. Um, if this was our money, I would absolutely vote no against it. And actually, I don't even know that you would suggest it if it was, it was our money, considering how, I mean, the, the homes that we were able to cover with earlier costs, what we were talking about for one charging station. Um, yeah, it's crazy. So, I just want to, um, speak my conscience. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
County Manager?
Thank you. I was just going to say, I, I concur, these are really expensive. I think, you know, um, and I'm not, I'm not sure, just given the current economy, when these will become more affordable and more customary. I, I will say one thing that, um, Brian raised that I, I just really want to lift up, and that is, the, the, um, line that we get in to be able to buy these kinds of products is partly why they're so expensive. And including just actually buying the, the actual infrastructure that we're going to be placing. Uh, and I, I mention that only because, um, it, one of the issues that I want to be cognizant of is where we have opportunities, again, to speed up processes. And this is a kind of example, and I'm sorry I didn't think about it beforehand, but this is a kind of example of a project I would love us to, um, be able to, to, um, ask for a suspension of the rules, in part because of the deadline by which we need to spend this money. So, I, I don't know if there's a comfort level around that, especially given what Commissioner Benson just said about the costs. But, you know, our objective is to get this placed as quickly as we can. And, and I will just add one other thing. I don't know how many people in the audience or who are listening have electric vehicles, but if you do not have the ability, um, to, uh, you bought an electric vehicle, but your home, it, you're not able to use it at home, you look, you seek, uh, around the community for places to go charge. And there aren't very many places in the whole, uh, region that you can fast charge, um, in a public place. And so, I would just ask if, if we could suspend the rules that make it easier for us to meet that deadline, I want to make sure we're taking in that resource and spending it as, uh, quickly as we can. And I apologize, Chair, for not discussing this before the meeting, but just listening to him kind of panicked me.
Yeah, thank you, County Manager. And I, I, I would, I'll make that motion in just a minute. But, um, what I wanted to say, and, and I agree with you, Commissioner Benson, it's crazy how, how expensive this is. And, and, uh, the little that I know, there's some pretty big wires and things in there, very expensive transformers and all that kind of stuff.
That's true.
Um, so, you know, it's, it's a pretty complicated piece of equipment. But as an EV driver, it's, my wife's going out mine, so I don't get to drive it as much as I want. But, um, when you travel with an EV, uh, the DC fast charge is the only way you can travel. Because you don't have time to sit for six hours and charge on a Level Two. It works great at home, but it does not work traveling. You have to charge Level Three. Um, and what we've learned, and we actually love this about traveling in an EV, is that you park for maybe fifteen, twenty minutes, and you walk around. It's unlike a gas station, right, where you just, well, you can, you can just sit there and, you know, sit in your car. But we've really taken to using that as an opportunity to walk around the community where we're at. Walk around, grab a bite to eat, uh, take in the local area. And so, I also look at this as a bit of, uh, of a tool for attracting people to downtown Albuquerque that are coming off of I-25. It's very close to the exit, uh, who are going to come here and park there because they know they can get that fast charge. Uh, and in the meantime, some of them are going to leave their car and do exactly what we want to do more of downtown, which is go to restaurants, frequent local shops. So, I think it's, I think it has multiple benefits, um, not just to those that are local commuters. So, uh, I would make a motion for suspension of the rules for immediate action on this item. Have a second? Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Benson?
I like that we're suspending these rules, and I think we should do so more often. Thank you.
Only when necessary. I do think it's necessary. That's why I'm making a motion. Uh, all right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, signal in the affirmative? Yes?
Aye.
All right, passes five zero for immediate action. And so, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, actually, no, I'm sorry. Now, Madam Clerk, got to put you on the spot again. We need a, a resolution number.
Thank you. That would be, uh, AR, or is it an FR this time? Yeah, FR, uh, two thousand twenty-five dash ninety-two.
All right, so I would make a motion for adoption of, uh, item ten D, FR two thousand twenty-five dash ninety-two. Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, signal in the affirmative? Yes? Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes on a five zero vote. All right, our next commission meetings will be held on Tuesday, September twenty-third. We'll have a special zoning meeting at three PM, followed by our administrative meeting at five PM, right here in the Ken Sanchez Commission Chambers. And with that, if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned.
And if anyone sees feathers anywhere, pick them up and give them to me, please.